Hey, welcome everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting of the Livingston City Commission on November 6th to order at 5:31 PM. Roll call please.
Chair Kale.
Here.
Vice Chair Nitz.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Willach.
Here.
Adam Horne.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lyons is excused this evening. So first, we'll start out our meeting like we do with every meeting with public comment. This is general public comment for items that are not on the, on tonight's agenda or on the consent items. So if you would like to make public comment, first I'll remind folks, individuals are reminded that public comment should be limited to items over which the commission has supervision, control jurisdiction, or advisory power. You'll have four minutes to make your comments. I'll ask you to come up here to the podium and sign in. And we can get started. Leslie, welcome.
Good evening, commissioners. Chair Kale, so tonight I'm Leslie Feigl Livingston Chamber. Sorry, it's been a very long day. And tonight I wanted to just hit on a couple notes, and that is about our community. Our community has three new businesses that I'm going to speak about tonight. There's been a couple ribbon cuttings and what I'd like to find a way that maybe a better path that we could really invite not only you, the commissioners, but also city staff, the community as a whole, to attend ribbon cutting. Their big celebration, their new businesses that are, you know, at a really difficult time today. In this day and age of opening a business. We actually have three in the next two weeks. So we have one that is this Friday at noon. And it is new owners and they're doing a grand reopening at the Tanning Salon, which is right there on Calendar Street. You guys might know where that is next to the Hat Company. So wonderful couple took that over and it'll be from two to seven, but we're doing the ribbon cutting and opening the doors right at noon at lunchtime. The second one is Saturday at 6:00 PM. And that is going to be the Drift Studio. So it is a kind of like a consortium and multiple different businesses in there, but basically this is for men and women. It's like self-care. So everything from facials, massages, botoxes, nails, all that kind of stuff. So that'll be a wonderful one. And that's at six o'clock. So we'll be cutting the ribbon again for them to open their door. The new owner, she's been in our community for a very long time in multiple other businesses. And this time she wanted to start this on her herself. So I would encourage you to come to that one. And also November 22nd. So November 22nd is our fall, our fall art walk. And at 5:00, the De Young Studio. So if you don't know the history of De Young's art gallery, they used to be here before. They had beautiful gallery and he actually is the one that painted the fish that we have mounted on Main Street. And so Janelle and he, Derek, went back to take care of their family and have recently moved back and took over what was the Pawn Shop and which is on the third block of Main Street, which is now the De Young Gallery. So and it's kind of different. It's not just hanged art. They do everything from shirts to hats to cups to all kinds of great, even cellphone covers, a lot of other wonderful stuff. So at all price points for everybody. So there's three and that one, that ribbon cutting is at 5:30 on November 22nd. And that one should be a big party as well. So we have three events coming up and I'm really hoping that we see some of the commissioners there. Stop in, Mr. Gager, yourself shake hands and welcome people to your downtown business. conglomerate. It's a good way of putting it because, you know, we have a lot of businesses and buildings that are coming and going and moving. And holy cow, and for sale and a lot of changes coming on those three blocks of downtown. So trying to stay up on top of it. So thank you very much for your time tonight. Hope to see you soon.
Thank you, Leslie. Anyone else for general public comment items not on the agenda? Or consent? Patricia, I see you coming forward.
I think I'm writing for record this number times I've signed in. Well, I have good news and bad news. Good news was, thank you. We, we had a wonderful downtown convention here. And the speakers were wonderful and appreciated everything that went on. Except I realized that this commission that the city staff that almost very few people actually really know the history of Livingston in its early stages. It surprised me. And there was nothing that was included. Now Livingston qual- could qualify as a national, international world historic site. That means it would be in the same category. Yellowstone is a world heritage site. It would be in the same category as the as so many of the sites across this planet. And yet in that entire experience that people had, there was no understanding, zero understanding of what Livingston's history is. That we have 20 hotels downtown. That it is potentially a world heritage site since it is the original entrance to the first national park in the world. So as a result of that, really shocked me. We, we sneaked in our walking tour for lunch. At lunch, so people when they went to lunch, they could at least learn something about Livingston. We have 400 buildings on the National Strike Register. We have more buildings on the National Strike Register than New York, Philadelphia, Boston combined. We're such an amazing town historically. So I would like to extend an invitation to staff and to everyone. I will take you in my little wonderful element. And I will give you a tour that you, every staff and everybody should have at least what is what we are looking at. So I would really appreciate it if this city commission and staff would consider educating themselves on what we have to offer. The other part of quickly that I would like to expand on with you is the nature of our shops and the history of our shops. They are about a quarter of our downtown area. And they're an enormous asset that I'm sure you've seen the op-ed that I sent to all of you and we have a treasure here, right? In terms of negotiation on the possibility that we could put our shops back to work making passenger, small passenger trains and hydrogen engines. That is the end of fossil fuels. And it's coming so quickly. So I would like also for this commission to have some idea of our shops. And what their history is and what they actually have within them that to offer this this world of ours. It is, it would be a game changer economically for our community and it's time we learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Anyone else? General public comments? Or comments for items on the consent agenda? I'm not seeing anyone and it doesn't look like we have anyone else. We don't have anyone online. But for me, so I think we will go ahead and close general public comment. Thank you all. Commissioners, consent items. Would anyone like anything pulled this evening?
Not I.
I'll pull I. You'll pull I? Okay, and I am going to pull A.
I'll make a motion if you want.
That would be lovely. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve consent items B through H plus J and K.
Second.
Right, motion by Newt and a second by Schwartz. All in favor of B through H plus J and K, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Shall we start at the top? Your call first. Yeah. Uh, so A is meeting minutes from the October 1st meeting, Mr. Gager. I have one change on page eight. Patricia Graybrow's comments aren't quite right.
Yep.
Do you see that?
I see what you're talking about.
So it should be, yep. It should be hydrogen trains and not units for living. So if we can make that change, if you can go in there and change that, that would be great. And that's all I have. Anything else on the notes, folks? Okay. I will make a motion to approve consent item A with the edit. Wait a second. Second. The second. Right. Right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. One and vice chair Nitz.
So I'm not in the police unit, but I am in Montana Federation of Public Employees Union. So I just want to abstain from that.
Okay. All right. Well, then can I have a motion? If there's no other, any other conversation about I? Okay, could I have a motion for I?
Oh, you got it. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Willach. Show a second.
Second.
Second by Schwartz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And abstain.
And one abstain. Yes, thank you. Just thank you. All right. Now I'm gonna think, jump in the end, Leslie, give me one moment, please. Right. We have one proclamation this evening and it is a proclamation of the city commission declaring November 8th, 2024, World Town Planning Day in the city of Livingston. And I see we have our city planner here and the audience, so I'll just gaze in her direction as we read this proclamation. I won't make you stand up. How about that?
We'll just stare at her.
We'll just stare, gaze over at her lovingly. Okay. So this is a proclamation of the city, of the Livingston City Commission declaring November 8th, 2024, World Town Planning Day in the city of Livingston. Whereas World Town Planning Day, celebrated every year on November 8th, recognizes the essential contributions of planners and the field of urban planning to communities across the globe. And whereas this year's theme, Home Starts With Planning, highlights the critical role of planners in creating housing solutions that are equitable, inclusive, and sustainable, meeting the diverse needs of communities and country, in contributing to the long-term well-being of residents. And whereas planners work tirelessly to envision, shape, and support neighborhoods that allow people to live, work, and play in healthy, vibrant economy or environments. And World Town Planning Day offers an opportunity to acknowledge these contributions. And whereas this day is celebrated in over 30 countries on four continents, uniting communities and planners to appreciate the profound impacts of thoughtful and well-executed planning on the quality of life for all. And whereas the city of Livingston is proud to support and recognize the dedicated work of our AICP Prudential Planning Director, who leads our city's efforts to create inclusive, livable, and resilient neighborhoods. And now therefore be it resolved, on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I, Carrie Kale, Chair, do hereby proclaim November 8th, 2024, to be World Planning Day in Livingston, Montana. Further, the city of Livingston acknowledges the vital role of planning and supporting housing, economic growth, environmental stewardship, and social equity. We extend our appreciation to our dedicated planning director, whose expertise and commitment helps shape a vibrant, sustainable community for current and future generations. Thank you, Jen. Mr. Gager.
Uh, yes, thank you to Jen and all of the other amateur and professional planners in Livingston and in the community also, because there's quite a few of them around and we appreciate their help every day.
I just want to recognize the difficult job it is to balance growth with our history and maintaining our history while growing. Thank you.
I remember when Livingston didn't have a planner. When I first was on the commission, we didn't have an independent, like a singular planning director. It was a one person doing about 12 bajillion jobs, I think, for the city, right? So I, we are grateful that you're here. Director Severson is a long time coming to have a planning director and people don't complain about you to us. So that is a huge plus. So but seriously, thank you for what you do for our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen, for all the work you've done. And we will continue to do, and we really appreciate you. So thank you.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
All right, we'll move on to our action items this evening. And the first one is ordinance 3055 and ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending chapter two of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled Government Administrator Administration to Conform Noticing Provisions to State Law Reflect the Existence of the City Clerk Position, Modify City Commission Voting Rules, Acknowledge a New Federal Holiday, and Make Technical and Conforming Changes. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. The item before you this evening is the second reading of ordinance 3055. And as the chair pointed out, this ordinance does several things, including recognize the city clerk position. Most importantly, probably is the conversation that occurred during the first reading related to the, excuse me, the quorum rules for voting. And so I did want to just draw the commission's attention to page 193 of the packet where I provided some alternate language based on the conversation that was held in the, in the last meeting and also provided at the bottom of page 193, some other non-chapter 30-related section, which provide for appeal to the city commission. Those might be other classes where, where the commission may wish to consider a different quorum rule. And, and then I would point out, you know, in my recommended language on page 193, the, the underlined final sentence, which refers to chapter 30 of the municipal code, which is where the zoning provisions live. We should also reference chapter 28 there quite possibly, which is where the subdivision requirements live. So at this point, I will stand for any questions the commission may have.
Commissioners, clarifying questions?
Clarifying questions I don't have.
Commissioner Schwartz.
I'll ask a clarifying question. Um, administratively, do you think that it's helpful to separate the chapters? Or do you think it would be more helpful if we just applied a vote to all votes, like provisions, like the guidelines for a vote to all things that were on the agenda? Does that make sense?
It, it does.
Did I word it correctly? Okay.
Yeah, and, and you know, certainly having different voting criteria for different actions is a little bit more, you know, just administrative, you know, record keeping on our end. But that said, there are different voting thresholds, as we discussed previously in state code as well. And so we're already kind of managing that list. So, you know, I would say from a staff point, standpoint, we don't really have a preference. This really is the, the preference of the commission.
Thank you. That's all. Okay. I think I don't have any clarifying questions. You clarified what I was gonna ask about in your forward there. So with that, I would entertain a motion. You can open up to public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 3055.
Okay, one second. Motion by Schwartz. And a second by Newt. We'll go ahead and open this up to public comments. We'll start in the room. Anyone in the room have public comment on ordinance 3055? Seeing none in the room, I will go online. Does anyone online have public comment on ordinance 3055? I'll ask one more time all the way around. Any public comment? Seeing none, public comments closed. Discussion and deliberation, commissioners.
I'll go first.
Please do.
Why does that pop up?
I can't see your screen.
Why does that pop up in the?
Oh, that's.
It's not helpful.
No.
Um, so in the spirit of our last conversation, I would say that I support adding the subdivision, chapter 28 and the the recommendations in the staff report at the end of the page from Mr. Gager.
Chapter 28 and 30.
Chapter 28, adding that to 30, and then the non-chapter 30 sections that he outlined as recommendations at the bottom of that, page 193.
Other comments?
I'm sorry, do you yield? Yes, I yield. Yes. Thank you. No, you're good.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Nitz on that. Like I think it it takes a shadow of a doubt out of those particular votes that we have, where we gotta have us all here. I think I appreciate that after our last conversation.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Agreed.
Agreed. Okay. And I just just to play devil's advocate just a little bit. So we're thinking about it all. We know then, yeah. And this is for us, but then any other future commission moving forward that if we don't get the right vote, if we don't, if there's not enough of us here and we don't get that vote particularly on Landy's planning, then we are committing in a very timely manner to having another meeting. So I just, I, just a little devil's advocate to just remind us of that. Reminding, remembering that Landy's planning is time sensitive. And so that would, you know, rush to another meeting.
60 days, is it?
No.
No.
Could you answer that, please, Mr. Gager? The timing potentially for if we had a meeting and we didn't have the enough of, enough votes to move something forward or deny it? What is the timing? How quickly do, do those things need to move forward? Just for reference.
So Montana Code annotated requires subdivision applications to be acted upon within 85 days, 30 points of sufficiency. And so
And let's remember, let's remind all the steps.
Yeah, I'd say so. That, that includes the the Land use review, land use board review process, as well as our noticing and then bringing it up here. And so I guess to kind of answer another question, I think I heard in there, you know, conceivably, we could be calling special meetings as soon as two days after the, the first meeting.
So just, I, I just want to make sure that we're aware. We're thinking that through for ourselves and for future commissions, like at worst.
Well, I think we think that any of us sitting in these seats know that these are the obligations that we have with our position. And so frankly, if that's what it takes to do the job effectively, then that's what it takes to get the job.
Can I? Yes, please.
I was thinking about this since the last conversation we had, and I think there's only been one instance, at least since I've been a commissioner in six years, where there would have needed to be a follow-up meeting and also the Board of Appeals came to the commission because votes weren't moving through timely with the Independent Board of Appeals. So we had to take that on. And that hadn't been an issue either since we've taken it on. So in my experience, I don't, and that was at the different administration too, that last. So I just don't see it being it just seems like
common occurrence.
Yeah, I feel like it would be less common now under the current administration than it ever would have been previously. So I'm not too concerned.
Okay, I just wanna like
No, but it's good to think.
Yeah, I want to make sure I'm thinking through all the
I think it's only happened once since I've been, I don't know, you've been a couple years longer than me. So like eight years.
Yeah.
Once in eight years.
Yeah.
Yeah, there would have had to been a follow-up meeting.
Yeah, I can think of one too. So, okay.
I would think it would only take one meeting after the special committee, because you have a vote. That's that. You just have to have numbers.
We have to have, yeah. So, yeah, we would have to make sure that there was enough in the room. Okay. Um, any further discussion?
From here.
Um, do we need to make a motion to amend?
We will need to make a motion to amend. Yes, if we're done with discussions.
Okay. Do you want me to make?
Yes, certainly. May I do that, please?
I'll make, I'm gonna just like simplify it and trust that you can make it comprehensible. I want to make a motion to amend to add chapter 28 and the recommendations in the staff report at the bottom of page 193.
Is that clear enough for you, Mr. Gager?
It is, yes. And, and I guess just to get it on the record, we will reference these specific section numbers 17 dash 13, 11 dash 64 and all of chapter 31 as well.
Yeah. Okay. I have a motion to amend. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second by Schwartz and then the amendment motion by Newt. All right, so we are going to vote on the motion to amend first. And so that motion to amend will be to add chapter 28. And chapter seven, sec- chapter 17, section 13, chapter 11, section 64, 1164, and chapter 31. Roll call please on the amendment.
Chair Kale.
For.
Vice Chair Nitz.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Willach.
For.
Motion carries. Okay, now we will vote on the original motion.
The amended motion.
There, thank you. amended motion. Roll call please.
Chair Kale.
For.
Vice Chair Nitz.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Willach.
For.
Motion carries. Moving on to action item B. Resolution number 5149, resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending the budget for fiscal year 2023 and 2024 by making appropriation of judgments, appropriation adjustments in the amount of $244,092 in revenue adjustments in the amount of $1,801. Mr. Gagers.
Thank you, Chair Kale. The item before you is the final amendment of the budget from fiscal year 2324. The commission had previously passed a resolution of intention to amend the budget, and this is the act that you'll actually amend the budget. As we've previously discussed, the reason for the amendments are primarily a piece of equipment, a road grader that was budgeted in FY '22 and not delivered until more recently in FY '23. And then additionally, the, the excess money through the Business Improvement District Fund that needed to be passed along and also accrued excess earnings in the perpetual cemetery funds. So I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, I mean, questions?
You know, qualify.
Okay. Okay.
Qualify, qualify.
Qualify, qualify. I know. All right, hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution 5149.
I have a motion by Willach. Show a second.
Oh, sorry.
Second by Schwartz. We'll open this up to public comment. Anyone in the room like to make public comment on resolution 5149? Seeing none in the room, I'll also ask online. Anyone online like to make public comment? All right, online or in the room one more time? Hearing none, I'm seeing none. We'll go ahead and close public comment. Commissioners, discussion or deliberation? Seen this already? No.
I think we get way fewer budget amendments than we used to. Which I appreciate. That's a good thing, actually. It's like good fiscal planning.
That just means it's getting better.
That just means it's getting better and better.
Right, I think um. That would be interesting data to observe, but I think the last couple of years we've had way fewer budget amendments, which is a good thing. So thank you. What's that?
Name small, miss small. Better, more accurate with your projection.
I think. Yeah, I think it's, it's um. Good fiscal responsibility to not be playing around with the taxpayer money. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Anything else? Roll call please.
Chair Cale.
For.
Vice adjourned.
For.
Mister Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Welch.
For.
Motion carries. Right. So we are going to, that's the end of our action items. We're moving on to a closed session. So I will make a motion uh to go into a closed session to discuss leader. Legal strategy pursuant to MCA two dash three dash two zero three four A. And matters of individual privacy pursuant to MCA two dash three dash two oh three three. I made a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second. My vice chair Newt. All in favor?
Aye.
By motion carries. Uh we will go ahead and go into closed session. We will do that and then we will come back. Um so we'll ask folks to step out of the room. If you're online, we will put you in the waiting room. Um and then we will bring everybody back when it's over. Thank you so much. Okay, so I'm gonna bring us back uh out of closed session and into open session. And we will continue down our agenda this evening. Uh and we are at city manager comments. Mister Gager.
Thank you Chair Cale and I thank the commission for their work this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Willis.
Um uh. I lost my mom a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, excuse me. And so um. I want to say if you all have the ability uh or the wherewithal to call your parents, talk to your mom. Do so, because you never know when you won't be able to. Are you? Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm so very sorry.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Ah sure, something, but I can't, doesn't come to mind at the moment, so I yield.
I called my mom today. So there's that. And I'm really sorry for your loss.
Um, yes, very sorry for your loss and. I don't know that I have anything else other than winter seems to be coming upon us and stay warm out there and don't get blown away because windy season has started. Um. That's all I have. Um so. Uh do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion. Oh, motion by Schwartz and a second. I, Willis, all in favor? My motion carries. This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at seven P M. Have a good night, everyone.